Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of February 22, 2023. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Tonight, council members are participating in person. Community members are welcome to join either in person via remote Zoom or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future by way of Zoom, you'll find instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Tuie?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
I believe she's on her way.
President Stonecifer?
Here.
Councilmember Tuie, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab, would you please read the land acknowledgement this evening?
I'd be honored. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stohuk people and their successors, the Tuleyup tribes. Since time memorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of February 15?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves.
Councilmember Tuie seconds the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And we'll move on to Mayor Franklin. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council President and councilmembers. I wanted just a couple of updates. Beginning next week on March 2, the Everett Station will begin welcoming students and their families to our Bezos Academy. So the first term is fully enrolled with 60 three- and four-year-olds in three different classrooms. So really exciting for us to be having this high-quality preschool here now in Everett, thanks to our investment here locally. So exciting news for us. And then, secondly, I'd like to invite Chief Templeman forward to welcome two new Everett police officers.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor Franklin, and good evening, councilmembers. Dan Templeman with the Police Department. And I am happy to be here tonight to introduce to you our two most recent graduates from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. So I'd like to start with Caleb Flom. So Caleb was born in Fargo, North Dakota. His family moved all around the United States during his childhood, and Caleb graduated from Churchill High School in Eugene, Oregon. In 2011, Caleb joined the United States Army, where he was stationed at Hunter Army Airfield in Savannah, Georgia for four years. Caleb then joined the Washington National Guard and moved to Everett in 2015. After moving to the area, Caleb worked full-time for the Washington National Guard as an instructor and obtained his associate's degree from Everett Community College. Law enforcement has always intrigued Caleb, and he decided to pursue the profession to make a positive impact in the community. Caleb wants to keep Everett a safe place to live and enhance quality of life for the residents. Having lived in Everett in the surrounding area, he feels we're better placed to do so than the community and be a part of it. Caleb graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on February 6, and he looks forward to getting out on patrol, where he can put his training into practice and begin serving the community. And in his spare time, Caleb enjoys spending time with his family and playing hockey. Thank you. And I'd now like to introduce Daniel Miller. Daniel was born in Sonora, Mexico, and in 2010, he was adopted by an American family, and he moved to Seattle once the adoption was finalized. Daniel graduated from Skyline High School in 2016 and went on to attend Bellevue Community, Bellevue College, where he graduated with an associate's degree in criminal justice in 2019. Prior to joining the Everett Police Department, Daniel worked three years as a response and movement officer at the Washington State Reformatory Complex in Monroe. Daniel has been interested in police work since he was a child and has always thought it would be a fun job. And now, as an adult, he sees it the same way, but it is drawn to the profession as a fulfilling career that will be full of memorable moments, hopefully for those he serves in addition to himself. Daniel also graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on February 6 and is eager to begin his field training. He's excited for the opportunities available within the department and in the future would love to work as a K-9 officer and serve on the SWAT team. And during his free time, Daniel enjoys competing in CrossFit, playing soccer, and spending time with his family. And I do want to just mention briefly, as I always do, the importance of family. I had the opportunity to meet with family members prior to the swearing-in and really stress to them how important that support is that they have outside of law enforcement and in their families and just how much they're going to need to lean on them to get through this journey of law enforcement. So I present to you Caleb Flom and Daniel Miller for swearing-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept Caleb Flom and Daniel Miller as the newest members of the Everett Police Department?
Councilmember Tuie makes that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments before we call the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And now Clerk will administer the oath.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Caleb Flom.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States or a lawful permanent resident.
That I'm a citizen of the United States or a lawful resident.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
And that I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
honestly and impartially,
Honestly and impartially.
perform the duties of police officer,
Perform the duties of police officer.
according to the best of my ability,
According to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, President Stonecifer. No further comment this evening. Thanks. Thank you. Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Good evening, President Stonecifer. We have no written comments and have two individuals signed up to speak on Zoom. So when I call your name, if possible, please turn on your camera and unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak, and there'll be a timer on the screen for you to reference. And once you see that and it started, you can begin speaking. So just one moment. Sorry. Go ahead, Joe. We'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Joe Consular here. I'm stuck in Skagit County. I have a lot to say to you in about three minutes, so I really appreciate the timer. Last week, I understand the city council has information that I don't have and made a difficult decision about investigating Mayor Franklin. I want to make extremely clear that although I'm not an Everett resident, this news makes me very nervous about the future of Everett Transit as Mayor Franklin and Sound Transit Board Member Franklin has been a very strong and reliable ally for public transit. And with a ballot measure likely coming next year to bring Everett Transit together with community transit, it, we really need, you know, hopefully have investigation concluded by the end of the calendar year. It was very, I have to say, it was very discomforting to come home after a wonderful evening at a public transit open house that literally became a must-fit. There were so many people there happy, you know, just trying to save, some were trying to save their shirts and support transit at the same time. Some just wanted to support transit, but everyone was there to support public transit. And it was very, very upsetting. So I don't, you know, I wouldn't be respectful of the council, but I really hope you understand the implications of this and that I stayed with Mayor Franklin. I think a lot of people in and out of Everett appreciate Mayor Franklin's strong leadership on transit and public safety, for that matter. With about a minute left, I emailed Mayor Franklin a request for a resolution before the Puget-Sagridstow Council tomorrow. There's been a troubled individual going to those meetings to hurl hate, and I'm not going to advertise him. He's currently a candidate for King County Council. He's also under Public Disclosure Commission investigation by me. So my hope is, is that we can close the skies of the Puget-Sagridstow Council's oral comment tomorrow and put an end to the out-of-control hate speech that's been going on down there. In fact, I'm wearing a T-shirt I bought from NDS Wouldbe with an AGM-88 harm missile. And so hopefully, we can fire a hate-seeker missile and put an end to this. I think I've babble enough about it. With about 25 seconds left to go, and I want to be respectful of your time, that I really hope we can bring Everett Transit together with community transit because Everett Transit currently doesn't have the resources to meet the needs of the region. And with that, I hope I was respectful of you and your continued public service. Thank you for all you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Next, Allison, if you could please state your full name and your city for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Let me just reset the clock. And go ahead.
My name is Allison Cusper, and I'm a resident of the Bayside Neighborhood District One here in Everett. I live just down the street on Wetmore. My husband and I moved back to Everett in March of 2020 with our two sons. We purchased a beautiful home in what we thought was a neighborhood really changing for the better. We have affectionately referred to ourselves as Everett apologists. I grew up here, and there are certain areas that are choppy with signs of economic and social struggle. But there are also areas that do show signs of hope. You know, we see new businesses, Port of Everett projects, the expanded children's museum. But we chose to come back despite the adverse reactions from our family and friends. And for the first one to two years, living back here, the issues were pretty manageable. They were stolen property, littering, loitering, even a couple people trying our front door, which are things we really shouldn't be managing, but we are. However, after the past year, we are feeling forced to make the decision to sell our home and get out for the safety of our family and really for our mental health as parents. We could make our decision quietly, but I want you, Mayor Franklin, Councilmember Fosse, and the rest of the council members to hear us. Last month, our son's school, Whittier, went on lockdown because somebody was brandishing a gun outside right before they were due to be released. And then, just a few days later, we woke up to gunshots on our block that we then realized or discovered were two businesses who had their windows shot out. And the reality is, our dog and our security cameras and our security systems will not keep us safe from bullets. They just won't. Our grocery stores require security guards, and even then, we're still approached in the parking lots. And it was the day after Banner Bank and Abbey's Carpet Store had their windows shot out that I was sitting in my car reviewing my shopping list outside the Broadway Safeway. And there were people clearly struggling all over the parking lot, some shouting incoherently, which really isn't a new experience for me or anybody else in the neighborhood. But it was in that moment that I realized how delusional I feel raising my kids in this area. And I often wonder what our kids think when we drive down Broadway and we see houseless folks sleeping and laying all along the streets, some openly using. And us parents are really faced with the dilemma of how honest we are with our kids about the reality that they're living in. And it just feels ironic that we feel backed into a corner needing to sell our home for our safety. And we couldn't even afford to live in the same area now if we wanted to with interest rates up. There really are a lot of amazing families here, but we've reached our limit on patience. We cannot be expected to pay what we pay to live here when we don't feel safe in our grocery stores, in our parks, or even in our homes. The folks on the street are real people who need real help, and you've not given it to them. They need this help in a meaningful and impactful way, and you've let it get to this point.
Allison, I'll need you to wrap up.
Okay. You've let it get to this point, and you're going to lose more members of this community if you don't figure it out soon. We need lasting, impactful solutions, as I said. And it's not our job as parents and community members to figure that out. It's yours, and we need it, and the people on the streets need it. We're just tired of carrying the load. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And President Stonecifer, that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to council comments and liaison reports. We'll start with Councilmember Arlingo.
Thank you. Just one, one topic to discuss tonight. Today, I toured Achilles USA, a business here in Everett out near the airport. It was a fact-finding visit to this business in connection with Sound Transit's light rail plans, specifically studying potential locations, foreign operations, and maintenance facility for the light rail trains. This will be the largest facility for the system. It's going to be here in Everett, and the Everett Link Extension will be the largest extension of the system at over 16 miles. Our goal in this visit today was to understand the impacts and the trade-offs and overall how well different sites might function because we have a number of sites to choose from. The, the teams and eventually the board itself will be considering many different factors, including housing, environmental impacts and costs, and how historically disadvantaged communities will be better served. But one significant factor that we were trying specifically to understand today was the operation of businesses that might be displaced and the consequences of that displacement. Moving a business is always really disruptive, but we had some indication that one or more of our local businesses would have extreme difficulty if displaced to make room for this operations and maintenance facility of 70 acres, I think it is approximately. Achilles USA came to Everett to a site near Boeing about at the same time as Boeing, now 50 years ago. They make a huge variety of plastic films with a set of football-field-sized machines. And a number of products, they're unique to the United States, critical for many medical applications, including vaccine production. So from all of that, there were two critical things that were important for Everett and for our region that we learned about today. First is that these production lines, this business, is not really movable. The buildings, the concrete floors, the structures are actually constructed around and after the machines there, so they can't be moved if this business is displaced by Sound Transit's facility. Relocation would mean rebuilding. That'd take a decade or longer. It would involve huge costs. And most importantly, probably wouldn't happen here. If displaced, this large contributor to our economy would not be relocated here, might not even be relocated in the United States. Second, importantly for us, this is a business that brings in considerable revenue from outside the region into our region. That helps tremendously with our economic diversity and resilience. The jobs, taxes, and inflow of revenue will help support all the other things that we want to do with our community. So I commend Mayor Franklin, Economic Development Director Dan Ernesti, the rest of the Sound Transit team, the hosts from Achilles for giving us a chance to learn about this. This is one particular thing that we really need to get right as we make these choices and eventually as the Sound Transit Board makes choices for the system. So thanks to all of them. I'd encourage everybody who's interested in this to get involved in the Sound Transit EIS scoping operation, which is underway now, and I think it closes March 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great. Good evening, folks. Happy Wednesday. Thanks first to our commenters tonight for taking the time to pop on and share their thoughts and perspectives and struggles with us on the council. It's really important to hear from people in the community as we continue to tackle our community's biggest problems. And sometimes, they're not always the prettiest parts of Everett. So I just want to really thank especially the parents of young children out there for the, all that they do in the community to just make it a great place. And I'd love to have that person's email address, if that's okay, Allison's email, so I can reach out to her. I'd love to chat more with her. I also wanted to thank, this week, on Monday, I attended the Lowell Neighborhood Association meeting, and I want to give a shout out to Cory Hurt for joining us at the meeting to share more about some transportation projects that are coming down the pipeline for the remainder of the year. Earlier, I guess it's been about a year now, he was very responsive to help with putting out a speed, our city's speed trailer, one and only speed trailer, along Third Avenue South there. And so collected data over a few deployments over a few months, and he was courteous enough to analyze the data and come back with some suggestions for the neighborhood about ways that we can slow down traffic along Third, particularly along the park there and the new dog park that's in. So appreciate Cory's willingness to stay out late and to hear the community's concerns. And he wrote everything down, so I'm sure we'll get right on it. Thanks again to Cory. Yesterday, I attended the Everett Public Library meeting and enjoyed having a chance to talk with the group. They're working on, kind of giving an update on their strategic plan. So I've got a chance to hear a little bit about that. And I also want to provide a reminder to everybody that this Friday, February 24, at 7:00 PM at the Everett Performing Arts Center, Kwame Anuachi, the author of Notes of a Young Black Chef, who's a James Beard Award-winning chef and acclaimed author, is going to be doing a presentation and a cooking demonstration at the Everett Public Performing Arts Center on this Friday. So it's a free event put on by the library, and I really encourage everybody to join for it. Should be pretty amazing. I wanted to give a shout out and congratulations to Apex Art Center for their grand opening over the weekend, partnership with the Everett Music Initiative. And I'm pretty sure I got my hearing back finally on Monday from the Hells Bells Show, so that was a total blast. Also wanted to provide an update that I've been reappointed to the National League of Cities Human Development Committee. So it's a national organization of cities from all over the nation. And we work together to develop advocacy goals. And the Human Development Committee specifically works on human services-related items, family and children-related items, poverty, social services, education, workforce development, all sorts of stuff that I find absolutely fascinating. So glad to take the stories from our city of Everett to the national level to hopefully influence change. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on the National League of Cities. Vice President Tuie?
Yeah. I attended the Delta Neighborhood last night, and we had a great presentation on DEIB, which I found out was Belonging by Kay Barnes. She did a great presentation and really engaged the group, and we had a great conversation on that. I also, I think most all of us received the League of Women Voters letter regarding the 2022 redistricting process. And we also have had a lot of public comment on it. So I did meet with Paula Townsend this last week to see if we couldn't find a solution for the future. And we discussed creating a handbook for the process in 2032. And so I would like to ask Councilmember Stone, President Stonecifer, to form an ad hoc committee to draft this handbook, which we would then vet with the legal department. And I would fully recommend include Paula on that committee. And this would helpfully alleviate any confusion in the future with the process.
Thank you. And I also had met previously with some representatives of the League of Women Voters and Paula Townsend and had a similar conversation with them. So I think that sounds like a great idea. We will add that on to our work plan for this year, so.
Great. Thank you.
I will ask councilmembers, if you're interested in serving on this committee, please just shoot me an email, and we'll come up with who wants to lean in on that work.
Great. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Councilmember Fosse?
Thank you for meeting not only with our Delta neighbors but for bringing forward the playbook. That's, that's going to be very, very helpful, so I appreciate that. I'm President Tuie. I wanted to thank our public commentators for coming forward and speaking, and in particular to my Bayside neighbors. It pains me to hear that we are losing neighbors. It's not the first time that I've heard this situation and this issue brought forward. When districts happened and we got, you know, five new, very eager voices onto our council, you know, very interested and excited to make change and bring legislation forward and, and policy changes, I feel like, at least personally, that eagerness to make an impact for our community felt like it hit some barriers. And I know that I was very eager to join the Public Safety Committee, be a part of that, looking into solutions that we could do. And there's the very real issues of, you know, the workforce shortages that we're dealing with that impacts the work that our police can do and some of the other elements, you know, taking place at different levels of government that is not necessarily something within, you know, the purview of a municipality to solve. And we will have to all be working together to come up with solutions that will positively impact our community. But it has been very, very difficult when requesting to be a part of the solution that we get hit with such barriers as denial of access to, you know, ride-alongs with the co-ed team to see how things are working and trying to be more involved in that process. And it was just a very realization of the limitations when bringing forward council-initiated policy. We didn't even, we weren't even really set up for that. And I am very hopeful with the way things are set up and the direction that we're going now with putting forward our priorities and looking at how our procedures and processes are laid out, that things will change in the future and we will have more pathways forward to making that change that we are so eager to be a part of. And again, I know it's not everything within the power of municipality to be able to solve. There are some things that come at the county level and some funding issues and workforce issues and things that have to take care of at the state level. And there are other benefits that have already been planned out that are coming down the line in future years, pathways that will help us with dealing with substance abuse and a lot of the issues that play into the violence and some of the other things that our neighbors are dealing with. So I wanted to just say that while I'm really thankful for our police that came on to join our Everett team in the willingness to serve our community, I'm also very thankful for our neighbor that came forward and just thankful for the words that they shared today, even though it was sad to hear.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Fosse. Let me respond to that as well. First of all, very much appreciate the neighbor coming forward. I also, it pains me to hear anybody experiencing that. And I understand completely because I experience it also on a daily basis. And I've been advocating for change at the state level for an entire year to try to make it possible for us to do the right thing and provide people treatment and change the laws so that our public safety teams, both social workers and police, can intervene. And then, in regards to barriers that you may have experienced as council, it is true that sometimes it is not appropriate for council members or other members of the public to do ride-alongs. Sometimes it's related to staffing levels in our Everett Police Department.
Sometimes it's related to staffing levels in our Everett Police Department, and our team is so busy doing the work of public safety that it's not an appropriate use of their time to give tours to our electeds or our public. Sometimes it's because the work that they're doing with the people in severe distress, people like me, or Councilmember Fosse, or general members of the public, would be an interference or a barrier to them accessing the services. But I do believe it is a very important experience for you all as councilmembers to have ride-alongs, have ride-alongs with co-ed, have ride-alongs with other members of the police department, and I encourage all of you to reach out to us and as staffing levels and the work is appropriate. We would love to have you join us because I do think that helps you really see the work firsthand and what's working and where we can make improvements. So, thank you for bringing that up, and I welcome you to reach out for a ride-along. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, thank you. I am actually very encouraged of looking forward of the districting, and so thank you for the work, and thank you, Paula, for the work that you've done and the motivation and the inspiration and the time that you've spent on it and the passion. I really appreciate that. Also, coming up, I want to thank the mayor, moving forward with a committee to work on the project labor agreement. So, I hope that we can, here in the next couple of months here, come up with an agreement or a proposal for council to vote on. I too want to emphasize the importance of Sound Transit and the Everett Link Extension and the amount of work that's going on. I know we had a briefing yesterday from the mayor's staff. Thank you for that. They did a great job. We probably could have talked about six hours instead of the hour, and so I think you have one more plan, so I'd encourage my colleagues here to attend that, plus they're going to do a presentation next.
That's right.
Yeah, so there's a lot of information, so I'd really encourage you to do the briefing. It was really important. It's pretty exciting to see, and I just feel privileged to be a part, all of us to be a part of the planning. It's going to affect generations to come, so I'm really looking forward to that. Also, I have witnessed, and I'm getting a lot more emails and phone calls about the open drug use on Evergreen Way, specifically the Cascade Plaza on 75th and Evergreen. And also, I'm getting, I'm hearing at night and getting a lot of infinite feedback from our residents about the high-speed races that are going on in the middle of the night. And I know those are all projects that we're all working on, aware of it. I just wanted to acknowledge that that, I as a council member and us as a group know that these things are going on, and hopefully we can work with the staff here and make some positive solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Allison, for your thoughtful comments. You're not there to look at, sorry. Thank you so much. I went to the TAC meeting, and as always, it was long and fruitful discussion. And of course, I forgot my notes, so I'm racking my brains trying to remember all of the things, but I do know that the Bicycle Master Plan was brought up again, and there was a real push by TAC members to make sure that all of council is really looking towards, you know, like Vision Zero, and I think that we are, but, and separated bike lanes not just by paint, and really having more of a concerted effort towards building proper infrastructure to keep people safe that aren't in cars, because we know that being in a car typically, you're, it's like armor. And there was a request to look at Hoboken's, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, town, they've had zero traffic deaths, four straight years in a row, and only nine in like 11 years, and eight of those, now I'm just guessing, but it was a really, the majority was impaired drivers. So, that's pretty amazing. And I know that even, I think this morning, there was a pedestrian struck on Broadway here in Everett. So, I'm looking at that. I'm hoping to bring your awareness, if you're not already aware. And I also spoke with, oh, by the way, Public Works and Transportation and Engineering are doing wonderful things, and on Old Broadway, I totally noticed that all of the weeds and stuff up against everywhere was cleared out, so go Public Works. I spoke with some advocates for community health centers today, and I'm just putting it out there, I know there was a Herald article recently about the physicians unionizing, et cetera, et cetera, so I encourage you to check out that story. And I think that's all, except I do have something. I was at Esther's Place on Tuesday, because that's where I go, and it was actually a couple of weeks ago, and one of the gals there mentioned that she's finally, she's in the hotel now, and she's, you know, waiting to get a house, and I'm bringing this up because she has been plenty involved with co-ed, and there's been some, I don't know the staffing, but who is staff, but there's been some changeover, and she just had really great things to say about co-ed and that the officers that she is involved with have been truthful and done what they've said they're going to do, and she is on a good trajectory path. And I hear those stories a lot, and I just wanted to share that and give a kudos to the Everett Police Department. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much of an update. I just wanted to make sure that councilmembers saw the email I did send out this morning with council committee assignments. We're going to talk about that later on our agenda, but if you didn't, you can check that out. And I will ask, do we have an administrative update this evening?
No administrative update, thank you.
Thank you, and City Attorney Hall.
Don't have a report from the legal department. I will mention that my family and I were in Seattle Sunday morning. We lived there for 25 years. We still go back and visit people, and every time we go back, we are so grateful that we decided to move to the city of Everett despite the problems that have been talked about and that you all are working on and realize the quality of life that we have here. So, realize that was a very good decision. We're requesting an executive session to last 30 minutes. It's going to be an overview of a number of outstanding litigation matters, so there's no council action to follow. I believe I'm going to talk about 11 outstanding matters, so it's an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I with no council action to follow.
Thank you. Before I request a motion for the consent items, we're pulling consent item number two. That's going to go back to administration, but I will ask if there are any questions on item number two. I know that councilmember had asked if we could pull that to the action agenda, but we will be bringing it back within the next couple of weeks. So, if there are questions, you can ask them now, or you can send them to administration so that they will be prepared to answer them when that comes back.
So, are you saying that it's being removed from consent?
It's being removed from consent and removed from the agenda. They're gonna, they wanted to have some more time on it and work with the Downtown Everett Association, and then they will be bringing that back forward to us.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay. Great. If you had any question, any specific questions, just send them to administration so that they can answer it when it comes back.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I will ask if we have a motion for consent item one and items three through seven.
I move approval of consent items number one and three through seven.
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes. We have nine proposed action items on the agenda tonight. Items eight through 11 are second readings. They've already been read into the record at a previous meeting, and items 12 through 16 are first readings. Therefore, I'm going to read each of those into the record. Item 12 is Council Bill 2302-10, first reading. Adopt an ordinance to amend and close a special improvement project entitled Doyle Park Playground Replacement, Fund 354, Program 070, as established by Ordinance Number 3809-21. The third and final reading will be on March 8th of this year. Item 13 is Council Bill 2302-11, first reading. Adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Forest Park Sport Court Renovation, Fund 354, Program 065, as established by Ordinance Number 3733-20. Third and final reading will also be on March 8th. Item 14 is Council Bill 2302-12, first reading. Adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Howarth Park Sport Court Renovation, Fund 354, Program 071, as established by Ordinance Number 3820-21. Third and final reading will be on March 8th. Item 15 is Council Bill 2302-13, first reading. Adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Howarth Park Playground Replacement, Fund 354, Program 069, as established by Ordinance Number 3810-21. Third and final reading on March 8th. And item 16 is Council Bill 2302-14, first reading. Adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Legion Sport Court Renovation, Fund 354, Program 066, as established by Ordinance Number 3734-20, and amended by Ordinance Number 3817-21. Third and final reading will be on March 8th. Do we have any questions on any of the proposed action items? Councilmember Ryan.
This one's for you, Bob. I have a question about item number 12, the Doyle Playground Replacement Project. So, I was curious, first of all, I'd like to give kudos for the playground itself. It's delightful. My children love it. We play Sea Monster there all the time. But for the lower area of the park, are there any plans or is it on a list of some sort to, for a wetland restoration project or to work on the culvert that goes under Norton? Or is there any further work that's being considered for the lower wet area of the park? Or the boardwalk as well?
Bob Lander, Parks and Facilities Director, we don't have anything on the current radar right now. I think we are aware that there is some more potential work that could happen at that location, but there is nothing being actively worked on at this time.
Okay. Will the boardwalk stay where it is then?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I'm not, I'd have to look into the boardwalk question.
Okay. Because I think every time I try and go on it, there's creaky boards, and it feels dangerous. And I know it serves a function to go over the wettest part of the park, and, you know, there's the funky grass that grows, skunk weed or whatever it's called. So, I would have concerns about it being left there for a long period of time, so just would want to make sure that's on somebody's maintenance radar or.
Absolutely. I'll find out about the boardwalk, and we can get back to you and the rest of the council with that answer.
Great, thanks. Wait, one more thing I want to say about that. Well, I have a soapbox. I'm sure you've heard me say this before, but that area of that park is the original headwaters of Forgotten Creek. So, the earth's not going to forget that it's the Forgotten Creek, and it's always going to be wet, and there's always, I hear water running underground, and it's always going to be, try and be a creek again. So, I feel like if that could be on some sort of a restoration project pipeline to restore it as a creek, especially that bottom area, it would solve a lot of the issues that the earth's trying to reestablish that's been taken away over time.
I will add that, and council's aware that we have had some more initiatives to really talk about adding stormwater elements to our parks, creating stormwater parks, or creating park amenities on stormwater facilities. So, I do think that this does tie in with those projects that we're looking to, you know, increase in the upcoming years.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments on proposed action items? Okay, we'll move on to our action agenda. Both of the items on our action agenda tonight are third and final readings. Item, I guess it's item one, but it's probably really item 17. Council Bill 2302-03, third and final reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Hannah Brook Park Improvement Project, Fund 354, Program 085, to accumulate all costs for the project in the amount of $110,000. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are questions or comments on this item? Councilmember Ryan?
I just wanted to thank staff for getting back to me last week. I had a question about the ILA with the county and if that paired up with the original proposal, and everything's taken care of, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes. And next, we have Council Bill 2302-04, third and final reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled TA Sullivan Caretaker House Demolition, Fund 354, Program 082, to accumulate all costs for the project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes. Okay, we're coming up to our discussion about council committees, and so, as my colleagues will remember, we have been working on this since the retreat. Couple of weeks ago, we did a very extensive project of listing our priorities, and there were quite a few. So, Kathy Solberg went back and helped us prioritize those things. We're going to have her here tonight. We also tonight have administration here. We have Nicole here to help us understand the priorities and work plan on the administrative work plans for the year, and those will need to be part of the committee work too. So, it's going to be the work of the committees to kind of work with administration and department chairs to decide how to stage the work with, between the committee, the committee priorities that came from council, and the administrative priorities, and kind of just figure out how to make all that work on the agenda for the year. So, first, we have Kathy Solberg back here, and she's going to present an update on council priorities and then the ranking that was a result of our last work. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. Thank you, President Stonecypher, and thank you, everyone else. I am just returning to bring this full circle for, it's been about a month that we looked at our priorities and went through all of that. So, what I have done is taken from all of you, your ranking of the priorities that came up, and just remembering that while these were initially formed from ideas where each of you thought that there would be consensus with yourself and three other council members on actions that can move forward and be moved to the committees, I'm going to show you how those priorities played out. And remember that it doesn't cover everything at all that you wanted to, that you will be addressing within those committees. So, we'll also look at that. So, let's see. No. No. Yep. Okay. So, I'm going to just quickly go through each of the committees and then how these looked out, and then I have the listing. I'm going to show you a visual and then the words. Know that the bigger the number, the less of a priority it is. So, we have the Safe Community and all of the responses there, and the top up to five, some of them didn't have five, that came out through your prioritization, was the number one came in as the traffic calming measures, and looking at that, the bike and pedestrian safety was second. The ARPA funding calling to reduce 911, third. Looking at the infrastructure for the police departments, where the domestic violence advocate could play a role, was four. And then finally, the recruitment incentives. Now, you'll see at the end of this, I have taken these priorities and also tried to distribute them. You might have copies made, do they, of where those priorities ended in your committees. You might have copies made, do they, of where those priorities ended in your committees. And I do want to say that I am not an expert in any way. I think some of these would end up in the budget committee that I might have put in a different committee. So that will be committee work for you to decide if they're allocated to the right areas. But when you looked at a safe community, these are five things that there was alignment with and how they ended up when you ranked these items. Moving next to the parks and quality of life, we had 11 items there. And when we rank those out, really far and ahead is it back to these? Councilmember Vogli?
Thank you so much. These lines are beautiful and so are the colors, and I don't understand them.
I tend to give too much information to help myself understand information and you get to be a part of that. And so the lines are where all of you had a vote and I didn't name those out because it wasn't important who said what. But, so the really tall lines are things that were very low priority. I can give you all the data if it's helpful, but this is just really one way to look at it.
Like, there's seven squares and they're different colors, so that's us?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so each color gave a priority number.
So like with that, when you look at the economic development, which is, one, two, three, four, five, seventh one down, economic development, really short. More people gave it like one through five because the, and then it's low. On the numbers that have the high, you'll see Salty Sea Days. A lot of people were like, hmm, that's not a top priority at all. And then where I would encourage that some of the topics that didn't make the top ranking, they'll still roll over to the committees, but then you would say, the Salty Sea Days was there. Clearly, we think that we have alignment around adding events to our community to bring everyone together, but it just wasn't a top priority. What I would think that the end goal of these priorities would offer for all of the committees is a place to focus where you have alignment, where you might want to do your committee work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
So we got the Excel spreadsheet, we ranked things one through 12. So then the ones are here and then the 12s are the high bar. Yeah, cool.
Thank you. And I probably could have left it with the words, but some people are visual and that's helpful and some people find it like, what is that, Kathy? So then we have the parks and quality of life. So the economic development, clear and far away, followed really closely by libraries is the second priority. The childcare, there were two, if you remember, issues around childcare. And the one that talked about the incentives for employers who could possibly open their childcare up to create opportunities for community to be able to use those facilities came in at number three. The stadium was four. And then the levy lid lift for funding was the fifth one. And then you'll see when I allocate that into the different committees, it didn't stay in the parks of quality of life, but I think it might be on the budget committee. And then that is yours to put in the right place at the end. Councilmember Fosse?
Can I just note that I am very surprised by the disagreement there seems to be on Salty Sea Days?
There's only five responses.
Many, many. And then the challenge with the data became, and I ended up working with a woman who used to, that has done a lot of data analysis for me. I ended up contacting her on the ones where people didn't vote or the ones where people voted for one twice and then how we weighted those and found the average to get the priorities. So it's been a big math problem. So then on to built environment. We had the bars looking at what was. Traffic calming came in as a high, a high priority, right behind the reviewing of the comp plan. It looks like because there's a lot of information there that's already been vetted, a lot of work's been done around it, it's an easy go-to for that built environment committee to have some things you can start to work on immediately. Then going to the traffic calming through the neighborhoods and then reviewing zoning. Going to, there were two for parking. I combined the two parking ones for downtown. Both of them had to do with helping business owners and having zoned parking. Some of you grouped those together with your voting anyway. Some chose not to vote and I just grouped that. And then the last one was the Everett Mall Lane, talking about the bicycles and that redevelopment. And for where all the other ones landed, I'm happy to send you that information as well. Health and Human Services. The two issues when we started this work, we did not have a Health and Human Services Committee. As I looked at a lot of the priorities, I had talked with Nicole and President Stonecypher and Vice President Tuie, just with the Health and Human Services, how that would work out. And so our two issues that you voted on were really more centered around housing and homelessness. So when you look at the housing, these are the way that the priorities played out to then have two of them come in at the same place for the, number one, with the housing affordability and the incentives as well as increasing density. Then we went into tenant protection, rental registry, and then receiving loan property assistance to get in homes. Looking at the homeless side of the Health and Human Services, we had the creating a day center for the homeless was clear in a way, the one that had the most overall support, followed them by increasing shelter space, utilizing some of the people, possibly with some worker retraining or having them work to be able to access the shelters. And then a lot of varying opinions on whether addiction is a requirement for many services. And Councilmember Vogli?
I'm curious if at this time, let's see. So I've brought up rental registry multiple times and Councilmember Ryan and I have decided to work together on some stuff. And it turns out that I just want to move it so that Councilmember Ryan and I are on, to move it to Parks and Quality of Life because I am there with Ryan and Zarlingo. According to this, I don't know if it's, you know, we haven't stamped it, but that would make sense to me because then I could continue to be working with Councilmember Ryan.
And we are not yet to, we are not yet to the point of that discussion.
Okay.
So...
Well, now everybody knows.
I appreciate that point of view and that's where I think the committee work will come down. And, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And then we have the budget and really the budget just went into, all three of these are things that need to be done, revenue generation, other levies and work plan. So looking at that and how those fell out. And then this is the document you have that really outlines all of the topic areas that fall under each of the committee areas and then what city departments they fall in and then how the council assignments were made. And then what I have done on a document that each of you should have that would then roll over into the work that Councilmember Vogli was just talking about is I did my best to put where within the areas of work do each of these priorities land. So I have sent that document out so you can choose to put it there or not and very, yeah, there's a, I just did my best on that part. So that is the way your priorities rolled out. And I have made an offer to take any of the information I used to put this together to make it available to council or anyone else if that is helpful. But I think that kind of brings us full circle for the work. I had sent recommendations for the rest of the things that came up in the retreat and I think that's that.
Any questions or comments for Kathy? Councilmember Fosse?
I just wanted to thank you for doing such a wonderful job and putting a lot of these together. I know you have a lot of different voices that are putting in input and I appreciate your very thorough replies to our questions on things and the investment that you put in this. I did want to check in on the actual procedures and process side of things and just kind of get an update of where that is going to be tackled. And that was in the email today, so I asked for council members to let me know if they would want to work on either of the two ad hoc committees. I guess we're going to add a third now as of tonight. But if you are interested in working on either of those or the third that Councilmember Tuie just mentioned this evening, just shoot me an email and we'll figure out, we probably can only have three members on each of those, but, and they have kind of short, limited timeline, I would say. So just let me know.
Kathy, thank you so much for your guidance through this process. Really very much appreciate it. I think it would be helpful probably for the committees to have the full ranking, the ranked list from top to bottom, just because it might be helpful for them to know what received zero or no or very little support so they don't end up charging forward on something that, you know, other council members didn't think was really important. But otherwise, we really appreciate your work and we will look forward to moving forward on it. And if we need you again, we know where to find you. Thank you. And now we're going to have our Director of Engagement, Nicole Weber, is going to help us understand the administrative priorities and how they kind of combine with the council committee work and fall under these little umbrellas that we have outlined for ourselves. Good evening, Nicole.
I was joking today, calling myself the fake Lori, so don't expect what Lori is able to do. But this was a fun project, so it was fun to work on. I enjoyed trying to work with Councilmember Tuie and President Stonecypher and Lori to think about how we take these buckets and put them into buckets and then into other buckets. But one thing that we really tried to think about and is the direction of our team this year is like, instead of trying to focus on what the problem is, we're trying to focus on what we're trying to solve, like what we're trying to bring to the community. And so that's kind of why some of the titles changed and, you know, we thought about healthy communities instead of, you know, addiction or homelessness or some of those things. We want a healthy community, so that's, we're not wedded to any of these titles. It was just, just wanted you to know where we were coming from and what we were thinking as we sorted through these. And so slide number one, I just have two quick slides which all of you have received and then I printed separate copies for you so that you could take notes or compare them side by side and kind of like go through that. That's how my brain works, so that's how I worked it out for you too. So slide one just covers the committee's priorities as you've already seen, as we took them and tried to cross compare them with what the administration was looking at, where you guys had things in common and where maybe they were separate and how Kathy had ranked things and how things fed up into each other. So one good example of that is housing for all means housing for all. So that means our shelters, that means temporary, long-term, supportive, million-dollar price tags, that means all of your housing. And so if some of your topics aren't specifically in there, it's maybe because they feed up into one of these titles. And so as you covered with Kathy, this is just buckets of work within each committee that encompasses both what you have identified and what the administration has identified. My second slide here, we went out to staff and said, hey, what do you think is missing? So this slide takes us a little deeper. And we worked with the staff liaisons and the departments to see what areas they identified that they thought were kind of missing from the priorities that both the administration and the council had put together. And so our ask is just that when you get together and decide your committee agendas and your committee priorities, that you also look through these priorities and see what you might add to your work over the next, I guess it's 10 months now. So that's essentially, that's what I have for you, short and sweet.
Thank you, Nicole. Do we have any questions or comments for administration? Councilmember Fosse?
I do want to go back to my previous question. I can hold if there's things. For the procedures and processes, I see you have the ad hoc groups here and it says guidelines for communication. Is that addressing the, I guess, desire for a process to be established for council to bring forward council-initiated legislation or when are we actually going to talk about those processes and procedures?
Those procedures, yes. And I'm sorry Lori's not here today. I'm sorry, misunderstood your question. As I understand it, administration was looking at our procedures document and going to create some edits and maybe Angie can help us understand if they're, if we're working on those edits. But they were going to edit our procedures based on what they heard us say and then we were going to be able to comment and look at those before we would bring that back for reapproval with new procedures involved in it. Is that correct, Angie? Okay.
I do feel like there may be more involved with that than necessarily just edits to the document that may benefit from a different ad hoc committee talking about the actual process. So that's something to consider.
Okay, thank you. Let me, let me look at where they're at. I need to check in with Lori and find out where they're at on the edit because I know she's not, obviously not here tonight.
Thank you.
And then we'll figure out where we are. Maybe we will add yet a fourth ad hoc committee or give it to one of the standing committees. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, just for some clarification, the administrative's recommendations is to put these subjects into the various committees, address them in the various committees.
Yes.
And the other comment I had was that, is today the time or is this something you're going to think about later? I noticed that there are, for safe, for instance, Safe Community Committee and Health and Human Services, we've got police and fire involved. Is that something that you're going to whittle out later or are you going to work, is that something we can have discussion?
I think given what, we just got this today from administration and I think what I'd like to do is take one pass through with administration just to talk through some of their priorities because, make sure that I understand exactly what that is. We did note though that, you know, a lot of topical areas cover more than one of these category, like we can either define things by department or we can define things by sort of topical category, which is what we have chosen to do. And that means that some things may blur lines, so, but we can look at things if it makes sense to move something off of one list and put it onto another committee's list. That would make, that, I think that definitely is something that we could obviously do.
Okay, so that's a process. So you're looking for just some feedback over time?
Yep. And at some point, the committees will get together and say, you know, hey, this really seems like this doesn't belong on our list and I'm certainly open to that and we can punt to someone else.
Okay.
One thing that's not listed there, Councilmember Schwab, or that I meant to say, I put in my notes but didn't actually say because I got carried away, is, so document one lists out potential departments that we foresee participating in these committees, but document two is your, who we think will be the lead. So if another department, for example, comes to Safe Communities, Chief Templeman is in charge of that committee, so he will work that out with the members of that committee. And so each department doesn't necessarily liaison, we just see that we would need information or maybe like a guest star visit from one of those department leads.
Okay, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I'm going to do my best to articulate this. So I think this brings us back to the conversation about mutual understanding of the purpose and intent of the committees and what the function is, like the core function of the committees. So the way that I personally see it is that the committees are a helpful place for discussion about legislation from these specific departments that are coming down the pike. So like the big sewer projects will come to the Built Environment Committee ahead of time of like, just so you know, here's what's coming down the pike so you're not surprised in three months when it shows up on the agenda. And then separately from that, the priorities that are listed are convers- are conversational items in committee and working items so that we have a working, an established working group to tackle things like violent crime, parks, facilities and whatnot. But we just, Kathy expertly led us through our council priorities and the ranking there, but now I'm seeing more priorities from administration that aren't ranked. Some are from administration, some are from department heads. So I'm having, I'm struggling with the mashup of how council priorities rank up against administration's priorities and director's priorities when the other two buckets aren't being listed in the same numbering structure that we did. So yeah, a little clarification, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's always, you know, it's always hard to, council members have always had their priorities and administration has had the work plan that they put forward. And so there's always been this sort of dance that the legislative and executive branches of government do. I think my envisioning of the committees is that, yes, we do have to deal with all of the things that administration is working on. But I think in cooperation with your point person, I'd like to see council members say, okay, here are some of our priorities, our top three priorities. How are we going to accomplish this? What do these mean? Asking maybe the same question, you know, what are we trying to solve for? And how can we put that on the agenda? And so what I'd like to do is have the council, have the committees meet and kind of have that initial meeting where you're talking through the priorities, the administrative work plan items that come forward and their priorities, and maybe kind of mock up a calendar of, you know, we know the comp plan has to come, you know, to the Built Environment Committee on, you know, X month so that it can get approved in time to meet state law. But we've got these other things. Maybe we could tackle, you know, this other priority that we have. Can we, you know, look at that in April and bring that forward? So I'm viewing it as a real collaborative process with administration to kind of say, you know, how are we going to balance your needs and ours so that we can get both sets of work done? I mean, frankly, five, some of those five items, one of, you know, any one of those items that we ranked as a priority could, might take the whole year. So it's going to be a matter of setting, you know, what are our goals for this year? Maybe, you know, for some of them, it might be we just really need to do some research and, you know, gather information and tee this up for future legislation. Some of them may be, hey, we want to see ordinances that other cities have passed in this area, and let's marshal those together and decide how we can bring that forward for, as a council-initiated action. So I don't know that, we're not going to rank our things compared with theirs because I think that we have our work requirements that we would like to do. And obviously, some of the things that administration is looking at are just things that they absolutely have to get done. And we're part of that because we have to. But, you know, some of them, we don't, we have a ton of say in like the comp plan. And that's going to move forward with or without our input, and we're going to have to approve it. So I think it'll be a mix of some of those briefings that we were getting accounts at committees last year that I know that was the bulk of the work. And then I'm hoping that with this prioritization exercise, we will have some ideas about things that we would also like to work on and bring forward.
Great, that sounds awesome. And then excited to see an amphitheater on here. That's the first I'm seeing of that. Love to hear more. And then I was hoping also for clarification, I love the idea of having the committees meet on Wednesdays before council. So, but there's five committees and four Wednesdays, so I wanted to just have a discussion about if that's still the plan and then how do we deal with that fifth committee?
Yeah, so what we have discussed is that the Budget Committee will always be the punt. So if there is a month that one of the committees isn't meeting, maybe the Budget Committee would use that slot. Otherwise, the Budget Committee will come into the council meeting. So we would probably open the council meeting and then convene the Budget Committee and do the Budget Committee work within the confines of the council meeting. There are also, we pointed out, there were three months where there are actually five Wednesdays, so we do have an extra. But in the event that one of the committees doesn't need their Wednesday, the Budget Committee will be flexible and maybe take that for their committee meeting. But we'll be the roamer. Because it involves all council members, it's easy for us to move that one into the council committee timeline or the council meeting timeline.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Vice President Toohey?
Yeah, I want to thank Nicole. I really liked the layout that you did on this. You did a really great job, and I like the positive spin on the titles of the committees. So that's great. And one of the things that I'm kind of seeing is that some of our items, our priorities, kind of fall in as one of a subsection of, say, prevention of intervention, of an intervention of violent crimes could very well, the domestic violence piece that we had would fold into there. So there may be some things that we'll just line up with, so I thought that was good.
Yeah, I think we'll find some, a lot of common ground when we start kind of delving into those pieces that we have together.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Vogel?
If I recall what you've said correctly, my rental registry question will come forward when we have our initial committee meetings and have discussion, what are we doing? Well, I'm going to take that from Health and Human Services. So I guess just beware, I'm taking it.
One thing, just to be kind of thoughtful of, too, as you make these decisions, is the staff liaison that's appropriate for each committee and who might not be. For example, if you move that into like, I don't know, Built Environment, Ryan Sasse is probably not the best person to come week after week to talk about a rental registry, but Julie Moore, along those lines, Julie Willey. So, you know, your staff liaison matters, too, as you make that decision. Councilmember, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. And also thank you for putting it all together.
Any other questions or comments?
Nicole, thank you so much for your work and for everyone in the administration who has supported us in this process. I think this has been a great retreat, and I think we've got some good results. And again, we're starting another new process, so I know there's going to be some hiccups. And just let's all just keep each other informed when we are finding that we're stepping on each other's toes, so. But we'll get there.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I was also curious about our external boards and liaison assignments for 2023 and if they'll be the same or if we can mix it up.
I am going to mix it up. I'm going to, I wanted to kind of look and see. I was trying to get the council committees out because we were doing that tonight. So that will come by, before the end of the weekend. I promise I will send those out. But I'm going to kind of try to stack them in a way that people who are on committees, certain committees, have topical areas with the boards and commissions that they're staffing as well.
Any other questions or comments on this? Let's see, I lost my agenda, so. Where are we? I think we're going into executive session now. Yes, we are now going into executive session. It's expected to last 30 minutes with no announcement anticipated.
This is Council President Stone Cypher. The council is still in executive session. We are requesting ten more minutes with no anticipated announcement.
This is Council President Stone Cypher. The council is still in executive session. We are requesting ten more minutes with no anticipated announcement. Thank you. The council is out of its executive session. And with no further business, we are adjourned.